Really warm in my office this afternoon, so I've had a fan going, so that'll help to with noise.
So we are live on YouTube now. Okay. Welcome for our regular meeting of council in person and live stream from the front plate Tuesday, June 4th at 6:00 PM. I'll open our meeting with our announcements of Montague Fire, defended their title and won the Pull the Pumper event held by Smith Falls Fire. Congrats, second year in a row. Still time to get tickets for the trivia and dance fundraiser being held at Rosedale Hall on June 15th for the Smith Falls Library. The MRCC Summer Party is coming up on July 13th. Summer Camp registration is posted and the Drake Day Trip to Calypso is up as well, which is July the 9th. Our land acknowledgement. The council and staff of the Township of Montague acknowledged that this sacred land on which the Township of Montague is now located and this meeting is being held is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Algonquin Anishlaug nation. We'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. So move by Councilor Abbas and second by Councilor Crabtree that the regular meeting of council agenda dated June 4th, 2024 be approved as amended to this date to move information items A, C, and V to actions. All in favor? Carrie? Any disclosure of interest now or maybe time during our meeting? Move by Councilor Crabtree, second by Councilor Johnson, the minutes of the previous meeting dated May 21st, 2024 be approved as presented. All in favor? That's Carrie. Any business arrived thanks from our previous meeting? Okay, so our delegation tonight is from KPMG for 2023 financials. So welcome Lori.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. It's nice to see you. I'm pleased to be here to to report to you the results of our audit for the 2023 fiscal year end. There were two attachments as part of tonight's presentation, but I will be sticking to the one which is the shinier of the two with lots of color that does include some of the key items from the financial statements proper as part of our audit findings report. So it was pre circulated. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to take a read and certainly would welcome any questions that you might have on anything that you may or may not hear tonight as part of the presentation. So we'll start on page number five of our audit findings report, which should say status at the top of the page to share with you. Our audit is essentially complete, but it does remain open until we have the conversations with yourselves being those charged with governance relative to the financial reporting process. So assuming the financial statements are approved here this evening, today would then form the date of your audit report and then our audit report would be closed. And we will see in a minute, we have included a draft audit report based on the results of our findings. It is a clean audit opinion consistent with previous years for fiscal 2023. So moving into some of the details of our report, before we get into the numbers, I always like to have a conversation with yourselves around the concept of an audit and what an audit entails. So you will see very much a reference in our audit report that speaks to the details of our audit specifically around our audit covers any items in all material respects. So materiality is an important audit concept to say it really sets the stage and the size and the scope of our audit in terms of the quantums of the items that we look at. So I have given you some color in terms of some of the benchmarks that we would use for a typical municipal audit on page number seven with the current and previous year comparative information and really the story for fiscal 2023. There was a slight decline in the benchmark which we use to assess and determine our materiality, which is either total revenues or total expenses, very slight because you can see on the left hand side of the page, the audit in the previous year was audited to an overall financial reporting materiality of $140,000. This year that declined a little bit to 137,900. We are allowed to use a 3% benchmark at the upset outside limit. And so we've done that again for fiscal 2023, consistent with 2022. As we move our way through the subsequent pages, I won't go through these a lot in detail, but just as a reminder to the group, we are very much a risk based audit, which means we stand back looking at the financial statements as a whole, trying to identify where there's a greater risk of material misstatement occurring and certainly adopting an audit plan and audit program to mitigate those risks. So you'll see they're very similar to what you would have seen in previous years. I would rate your financial statement audit to be low risk. Couple of items outside of that low risk or base assessment would be asset retirement obligations. And I'm on page eight of our report. As you would have seen, if you had the opportunity to take a read in advance, this was a new accounting standard that was required to be adopted in fiscal 2023. Anytime there is any new significant accounting standard, I would say in that first year of implementation, making sure that we get it right in terms of accuracy and completeness. That's why we see a deviation from base. The other piece that you'll see in any financial statement audit at the top of that page there speaks to management override of controls. That's baked into every single financial statement audit in Canada. It's given to us by the profession, not necessarily by KPMG, to consider management's opportunity to potentially override controls in their in their execution as management of any entity. So we've done the work that you'll see on page number nine to complete or mitigate that risk to an acceptably low level. So looking at the pieces that culminate into the financial reporting process and the controls and processes included therein, and you'll see at the bottom of the page, certainly no findings to bring to your attention in that regard. Page number 10 is very heavy, but what I wanted to do was give you an overview of this new accounting standard, which is asset retirement obligations. I know it's garnered a lot of discussion across the municipal finance group. So pleased to say that the team did have early conversations with us to make sure that the team was ready for the standard adoption in fiscal 2023. And really what this means when we get to the financial statements, you will see based on this new standard, it was requiring the team to quantify what would be an estimate of remediation costs to come in the future based on assets in your current portfolio. So you'll see there was two types really as part of your asset retirement obligation. One was the tanks, which is, which was a 2023 issue. The other is any asbestos that might exist in any buildings that at some point in the future would be required to be remediated. That actually now sits on your financial statement. So a lot of detail in there. The team certainly did employ the use of experts, engineers to come up with the quantity that we see in the financial statements, but the basis is fairly consistent with what we're seeing across the broader municipal group and certainly from a findings point of view. I'm happy with both the amount along with the disclosures and the adoption. A lot of words on that page, but really it's a good news story and the team was very, very interested early on to make sure they set themselves up for success and we're very thankful for that. You will see on the next page, on page number 11, there were other new accounting standards that were required to be adopted. They are included in the financial statements, but they did not have an impact like asset retirement obligations did. And that's certainly commonly what we're seeing across other municipals as well. So certainly no items to bring to your attention in that regard. The fortunate piece as we look forward to 2024, there's not the significant lift that there was this year and certainly the accounting standard. So pleased to report that these have been done very well. So moving into the numbers themselves, we'll start you on page number 12 of our report, which should say financial statement highlights at the top of the page, which is which is pulled from your financial statements proper. The statement of financial position, otherwise known as your balance sheet. This highlights both the assets and the liabilities of the organization at the close of business being December 31. On the right hand side, I would give you some of the more significant variances on on individual financial statement captions. And I would say nothing significantly new to bring to your attention. One of the things that we look at from an external lens in terms of the financial health of municipality would be your net financial assets, which you can see in the middle of the page there is fairly similar, I would say, to the previous year. 6.058 million in 2022 and that's sitting at 6.2 million. And that does also include your asset retirement obligation. So if we were to normalize that out, that lift would be $211,000 higher. So in terms of the balance sheet proper at the bottom, after we take off all of your liabilities from your assets, then you are left with your accumulated municipal equity. I would direct your attention to note seven to the financial statements because this tends to be of great interest, I would say, to council because it articulates the individual components of your accumulated municipal equity. So if I just flip there for a second, out of that 13.9 million dollars, you can see you've made a significant investment over the course of time in your tangible capital assets, which sits on your balance sheet. Also included in there are your reserves. The reserves are outlined in schedule one and I've given you some graphs in our audit finance report, but those have increased by about $300,000 year over year. And then you're left with the remnants, I would say, which would be your operating surplus. And I know that's something that's always of interest to council. That has grown as well year over year by about $30,000, just sitting just shy of $500,000 at the end of 2023. So behind there, I've given you some graphs just for interest sake. Instead of talking about numbers, sometimes it's nice to put the pieces together in terms of a graph. So you can see in terms of your investment in tangible capital assets, which at the end of the year, on a net basis, after amortization was sitting at about 7.655 million. You can see easily half of that investment sits in your linear assets and then all of the other components are a portion thereof as well. The reserve and reserve funds on page 14, I've given you a trend analysis over the last five years to see where the municipality has has come. And you can see there's been nice growth in those reserve and reserve funds over the course of that time as well. Page 15 is one of the KPIs that the province or the ministry does look at annually in terms of the financial reporting submissions. It takes your reserve and reserve funds as a percentage of operating expenses. Their bar is actually quite low on this KPI, but I would say generally speaking, there's their number is actually 20%, which some would argue is exceptionally low. It is a dated KPI from their perspective, but you can see there's been nice growth here as well, following along with the trends that we saw on the reserve and reserve funds on the previous slide. One of the things that we did notice this year on page number 16, this is another KPI from the province. And you can see tax arrears as a percentage of your current levy. So tax arrears are your taxes receivable that have not yet been paid by taxpayers at the end of the year. And you can see it has come down nicely. I would dare say in 2019, that would be high. The province would rate anything above the 10% mark to be high. So I would say in 2021, 2022, just hovering just above that 10% mark. And we did see a slight increase this year to about 13%. COVID was in there as well, certainly 2020 and 2021, but certainly hopefully that's not a trend that will continue upwards and hopefully we'll see a bit of a decline in subsequent years. On page number 17, this is the other half of the financial statements, I would say, which is your combination of all of your revenues and all of your expenses, otherwise known as your income statement or your statement of operations. You can see at a high level in aggregate, this is on a public sector accounting standard basis, which can be very different from a budget perspective. And there is a budget note in note 14 to the financial statements to reconcile those two. But you can see there was a surplus reported in 2023 of just over $580,000. Interestingly enough, when you look at the surplus in a particular year in a municipal set of financial statements, it can be difficult to predict simply because it's very much dependent on the capital activity that the municipality undertakes in a given year. So what I mean by that is as you spend money on capital, it sits on your balance sheet as an investment, as an asset. And interestingly enough, any funding that you get attached to any of those investments that you make actually flows through your statement of operations. So that's why you will often see in municipal sets of financial statements, significant volatility on that government grant line. And I've given you, I've given you some explanations on the right hand side there as well to cover off some of the more significant items. In terms of the numbers themselves relative to the audit on page number 19, you will see that we are required to share with you being those charged with governance, the the actual numbers that were provided to us at the start of the audit versus where we landed ultimately on the final draft set of financial statements. So earlier I had mentioned an overall reporting materiality of just shy of 138,000. So what that meant was through the course of our conversations with the team and the execution of our audit work, to the extent we identified any differences in excess of $6,895, that was our threshold, which is essentially 5% of that overall amount to have a conversation with the team to ultimately land itself either being corrected in the financial statements or uncorrected. I am required to share with you items that are uncorrected, so not included in the draft financial statements, which I've done on page number 12, sorry, page number 20. So as you see, each of those items there are certainly well less than materiality. One related to a capital item that should be removed from the books, the other related to an inflationary adjustment that will be required in subsequent years for the asset retirement obligation. So in aggregate, in terms of the impact of these, it's $17,000 on your overall accumulated surplus, which is a very small number relative to materiality. So certainly confident with the draft financial statements as circulated with no impact on our audit opinion. Page number 21 walks you through some of the highlights that we are required to share with you relative to controlled deficiencies, particularly those that we spend time and attention to relative to the financial reporting process. To the extent there might be any significant deficiencies in those internal controls, we are required to share those with you. So I'm pleased to report here tonight, we have not identified any significant items to bring to your attention. Jumping ahead a couple of slides, I'll just stop very briefly on page number 24. This is the new slide in our deck this year, which I think is a good one because it really is meant to to sort of have a completeness check on all of the things that we as your external auditor should be having conversations with yourselves about. So you can see all of the matters on the left hand side, to the extent any of those did exist, we should be upfront and transparent with respect to any of those and certainly document and and have a conversation around how those were remedied to the extent they exist. But you can see in terms of findings, none of those matters did exist for our current year audit. So there were no conversations that were required to be had. As a reminder on page number 25, in order for us to be engaged as your external auditor, we need to be independent. So what that means is that independent set of eyes in terms of other perspective that we bring to the financial statement. So we shouldn't be providing any significant non audit services that might be thought to encroach on our independence. So we do not provide actually anything other than the audit and the compilation of the financial information returned. So there's certainly nothing there from a service point of view that might be thought to impact our independence. The final piece to bring to your attention, which is included here on appendix 1A, page 28 of our report, is the body and content of our draft auditors report. So as I said earlier, it is a clean opinion for fiscal 2023. It does highlight the fact that there were changes in accounting policies in here that were material. So that's where we see the bottom on page number 28, the emphasis of matters that is required in the years where there are significant changes. So that will go away in subsequent years. And behind there, there's a number of informational items, which I wasn't going to go through any of those in detail, but certainly welcome any questions from the group if there are any.
I just want to thank Lori and her team. They're excellent and brought this to us relatively quick. And thank you very much Lori, your team was great and we appreciate all of you guys too.
Thank you. We couldn't have a result like this without your full cooperation too. So it's very much a two way street. So thank you. Much appreciated. So with that, I think I get to go. I'm good? Okay. Okay, bye for now. Take care.
Getting us through the audit. I know there are many municipalities who are still getting through their audit. Thank you, Halle and team. Next one move to the board of governors and. Okay. Good evening, council. So the report, first report on the agenda of me this evening relates to the parkland policy. So we did have a report that went to committee of the whole in April explaining that there was a need to update the township's parkland policy. The document that was provided gave some important details about what would be considered suitable parkland when cash and lieu would be more appropriate than requiring a conveyance of parkland. And also suggesting that the cash and lieu of parkland fees for severance applications be increased. So they've been $500 for considerable number of years and staff did canvass other municipalities. That was part of the previous report that was presented. There was quite an array and the recommendation was to increase it from $500 to $1,000 per residential building lot. I did want to provide some clarity that these are fees, they're not taxes. These are fees that are paid by individuals who are creating new building lots. While not required under the planning act, our council and staff felt that it was appropriate for transparency to have an open house. And one was held in conjunction with the proposed building permit fees to give members of the public an opportunity to come and speak with us, ask questions about the proposed bylaw. An information sheet was prepared, a copy is attached to the report. They give some, I think, important details explaining, you know, our authority for collecting parkland and cash and lieu of parkland. And what those fees are used for. We did have one person attend our open house. We didn't receive any comments from the public with respect to the parkland policy previously presented. So that bylaw has been brought back this evening and is on the agenda for passage if council wants to agree with the terms therein and the proposal to increase from 500 to $1,000. So I will open for questions. Move by Councilor Johnson and second by Deputy Reed Carroll, the council direct staff bringing forth parkland dedication bylaw to the June 4th, 2024 council meeting, as per the draft bylaw presented. All in favor? And the next one is also. Okay. So the second report from the planning department relates to 440 Sturgis Road. So with the passage of Bill 23, the authority for review and approval of site plans was delegated to the planner and the clerk. And it's only appropriate specifically since both of us don't have as much historical knowledge of this property to conduct a thorough review, just so we have an understanding of its history. The approvals and permitting that was approved to date. So the report is a bit more comprehensive. I'll just kind of give a like a surface summary here. So in 1989, the lands were rezoned from rural to general industrial. And that was to allow for a very limited number of uses, one of them, which was a public warehouse. And so the zoning bylaw that was in effect at that time was from 1977 and to find a public warehouse as a building or portion thereof where subdivided or compartmentalized storage areas are made available to the public. In 2010, the owners contacted the township to request the use of shipping containers as self storage facility. Now, the public warehouse is now defined as a self storage facility in our more current zoning bylaws. And is defined as a building which is divided into spaces, which may be rented for the purpose of storing goods, wares, merchandise, equipment or materials. Some authority might vary slightly, but the intent is that it is a building that is divided with areas for rental. So the new not yet enforced zoning bylaw defines self storage facility quite similarly again as the use of land, buildings or structures containing separate secured individual self storage units divided from the floor to the ceiling by a wall with an independent entrance from the exterior of the building designed to be rented or leased to the general public for private storage of personal goods, materials and equipment. Yes, the definition has been augmented. But the general intent is still the same, a building divided into sections. Shipping containers do not meet the definition of a public warehouse, nor do they meet the definition of a self storage facility. Shipping containers are accessory structures and the zoning bylaw requires accessory structures only be allowed if there is a primary permitted use in place. The owners should have been directed to obtain a zoning amendment to permit these structures to be used because the use does not meet the approved definition. Unfortunately, this was not done. Council essentially authorized the use of these containers when the site plan agreement was entered into in 2010 with the owners. And additionally, the 2010 site plan agreement did not stipulate the number of containers that would be placed, only that they be one uniform color. So skip ahead to 2020. So in 2020, it was brought to the attention of staff that there were some activities being undertaken on site, namely a parking and outdoor storage area that were not authorized under the 2010 site plan agreement. So council directed staff to make some inquiries and to bring back more information so they can make the decision as to whether this new development would be allowed to continue. This file is ongoing. So obviously between 2020 and now, we had this thing called COVID. So there have been lots of things come up. But the rules regarding the authority that council has to approve site plan agreements has changed because of Bill 23. So now this power has been delegated to the planer. So to date, there have been 104 building permits issued. There for these shipping containers, there are 121, 102 placed on site. And the 2020 site plan application was for an additional 174 shipping containers plus the open area that would be used for storage of vehicles such as boats and trailers. So while the shipping containers don't meet the definition of public warehouse or self storage facility and they're not permitted in the general industrial zone as primary permitted uses, they are movable standalone structures, they are accessory uses. So it is proposed that the owners be required to legitimize the shipping containers that are currently on site by applying for a zoning amendment to permit these containers to be utilized without a primary permitted use. It is not proposed to have them remove what was essentially already approved. It is further proposed that council waive the application fee for this file. The owners did contact the township for permission in 2010. They did receive that permission via the executed site plan agreement and the building permits that were subsequently issued. As dated previously, the owners are wanting 174 additional containers. And my math, if I math correctly, would be 278 shipping containers on site. Because these structures are considered to be accessory uses, it is suggested council might want to place a maximum number of shipping containers as a condition of approval for a potential zoning amendment. And additionally, an outdoor storage area is an accessory use under the zoning bylaw and would require an approved zoning amendment to permit same without having a primary permitted use in place. And it is recommended that if the owners wish to apply for an amendment, it would be separate apart from the amendment that would legitimize the shipping containers and would be subject to a fee. I know that's a lot. You know, I think the important thing, I just want to emphasize that, you know, we've been, the clerk and I've been given this responsibility and, you know, it's, it's important that we, we understand and that we're, we're being fair and that we're applying the proper zoning that's in place. So before going any further with the site plan application that was submitted, we thought it was important to bring this report to you to kind of bring you up to speed on what we've come up with to date and to get your direction. Or any questions, question?
So often one will legitimate, legitimate, legitimize what he currently has.
Yes.
But would not allow necessarily more. Decision we decide to undertake, which would basically cause further problems because somebody else might ask, why are we still allowing? cause further problems because somebody else might ask, why are we still allowing?
I think it's important that what's already there is non-compliant and in order to for us to be able to evaluate any future. So for example, if we, if we didn't legitimize what was currently there, but we allowed for a hundred and seventy four more, we're kind of exacerbating something that's already not quite right. We're not proposing to take away then is already there. But we need to make what is there compliant so that any future planning inquiries would be in the proper alignment. And it would be up to council to make that determination whether they are like, no, you have more than enough, you're not able to have anymore, or let's cap it at this, or pick a magic number. And I did do some reviews of some other zoning bylaws and other municipalities, just very surface level, just to see what they had in place. Nothing local that I could find, but several do have restrictions that you, you can have one shipping container per X area of property. So could be like one per half acre. And the, the intent generally for these shipping containers is that they are accessory storage on a property. Look at an auto, um, automotive repair shop. Sometimes you'll have your tires stored in there. Or a construction company that might have some of their materials stored in there. It's, I've not seen any other examples where an entire self-storage facility was housed in solely shipping containers. I'm not saying it doesn't exist. I'm just saying I've, I've not been able to find them. And it doesn't meet the definition.
So when would you like us to look at a cap based on whatever? Whether it's how many acres you have? When do we put that in place? Or when do we discuss them? Do we do this first?
I would think that, um, the appropriate way of dealing with this would be council agrees that we need to legitimize what's currently in place. That staff be directed to go back to the applicants and say this is what needs to be done to legitimize what's in place. And if you would like additional containers, then, um, other than what's already been approved, then you would need to request a zoning amendment for additional containers.
So you're gonna put one notice?
Hmm. And I do have it flagged in my, um, zoning bylaw binder for the, for the host, one year anniversary housekeeping. Um, that we might want to add some sort of provisions into our zoning bylaw with respect to like a shipping container policy per se. So more investigation can go into it. I don't know. Um, yeah, sorry.
If, if, so if we do give the amendment and we do make them compliant, that doesn't, uh, if we decide that we don't want anymore, that doesn't make it impossible. They could not actually build uh, structures that would actually be a storage facility, correct?
Correct.
So he could potentially actually build nice buildings like across the street.
Hmm.
If they, they have a choice to use.
What, whatever permitted uses are listed, uh, um, he would have the ability to, um, apply for, and they would be subject to site plan control because it is industrial development. It has to be a use, a primary use that's permitted in that. It'd be subject to review.
Is, is there a taxation difference between a constructed building or is it the same per square foot? Is that like a difference as far as that goes?
So chair through you. So, um, no, and I think that's the big component here is that whenever it's an accessory use or potentially limiting items that are removable from the property. So the taxes received are substantially less for the same like or greater traffic. So there's a hundred and four or a hundred and two on site. So all of those are rented. Um, so the assessed value, I'm not sure how impact actually does their assessments. Um, but a storage container either has no or very limited assessment. And I mean, under two thousand dollars for assessment. So whereas a building obviously has much more value, uh, and that's why currently and on our previous zoning bylaws as well, it was considered an accessory use because normally you would have the main use, which would bring in most of the taxation. So I just want to make it very clear that this individual didn't act outside of what was approved by staff and council of the day. It just wasn't necessarily um, addressed appropriately in the sense of the, the zoning amendment. I just want to make that clear.
Yeah.
Uh, we're not trying to fix something that somebody did, um, illegally.
No.
Um, yeah, it's just kind of that maybe instead of a site plan, well, not maybe, it should have been a zoning amendment that's supposed to be a site plan. So, um, just to make that clear. But yes, there's definitely a huge, uh, variation for the assessment in taxation from us. Moveable C container to a building.
So I think that that's the yeah, I, I think we have to fix forward what's there right now, which I, I agree with that too as well. I think that's just more sense to come. For maybe that next discussion as we go, which I'm sure we're gonna get information back from staff as we do it. But yeah, I mean, thank you.
Any further questions? Will we take it? We were going with option one. So moved by Deputy Reed Carroll and seconded by Counselor Aban. Council proceed with option one below in relation to four forty Sturgis Road zoning bylaw amendment. All in favor? Thank you, question? And now to Ali for the updated.
Thank you, Chair. So as, um, first had mentioned, we, um, were collaboratively on a public, uh, open house type of situation. So we did bring revised updated billing fees to council, um, noting that we currently have a substantial deficit in the building department where we should run relatively neutral. Um, so that's the reason our billing fees are eighteen years old. Um, so we did post, um, on the website and social media, and we had an open house on Monday, May twenty seventh. Um, again, we had one person attend, uh, from council and then, um, no one else. So the only change that came really from it, and we did have some comments, uh, we did have comments from the public that didn't attend though, and I have included them in the report. Uh, and another comment that's coming forward from staff and, um, from some public members as well is the thousand dollars for building without a permit is too low, um, too low for a number of reasons. So you're gonna see in front of you this evening a variations of two different charges. A surcharge for starting construction without a permit for a value of current valued under two hundred dollars to be some small, maybe some decks, things like that. And then you're gonna have a surcharge of any construction with a permit valued at two hundred and one dollars or greater. Um, the reason for that is that a lot of the times whenever things like that happen in their bigger buildings, we incur a lot of cost and time to deal with those. Um, depending on the situations. So we are recommending that staff have the ability to charge up to five thousand dollars, uh, depending on what's happening. And potentially any full fee for the township incurs. Um, again, this doesn't happen that often, but in the event that it does, the rest of the rate payers should not pay for someone, um, not following the policies and bylaws that are set out. So that is the recommendation from us. Uh, the recommendation is also, um, we deem it very imperative to not allow eighteen years to go by and that we do look at it on a regular basis to ensure that building development pays for development. That is probably the biggest key, um, in so in front of you this evening is the draft bylaw with the recommendation with tax thing.
Any open up questions?
I think the development for development is a big one. I know we, we've been talking about it for a few years too as well. I've never kind of getting through with the first one, the COVID thing kind of really slowed things down a few things, but trying to like get that back, 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 which I think is, is really good. It has led to as well as for the official fees. We talked about that. That's obviously gonna be like, like lawyer fees. Is that also like, is that gonna be a fee from staff, but your time? Uh, or is that just gonna, is that, is your, is your thought process fine? That's just, that's under the law.
Yeah, that would be what the fine is covering, right? So for example, depending on the situation, it could pull planner, myself, and CBO public works potentially, depending on the situation. Um, so that would be included in that search charge. Um, the other fees are potentially if we have a lot legal costs and or if we have to go in demo with it, right, that, that we would be charging that back to them. So just to make that very clear in the bylaw, we have the ability to do that in a municipal act anyway, but it's nice to make it very clear in the bylaw. Um, that any kind of additional fee outside of our staff time that's included in the five thousand, that it would be on, um, the individual who built, uh, within.
Just follow up on that. It's always been there that we could have had those that don't get permits to demolish what was there. Have them get a permit and then build.
Yeah, so under the building code is where that's gonna fall. So basically depending on the situation is they we usually try to work with the individual that there's no issue, come and get your permit, pay your small surcharge, replicate this, um, and move forward. But in the event that for example, let's say it's a building built on a unsurfaced road or a, um, uh, an open, unopened road allow. You can't get a building from there. So the building need to be so it's just those kind of things. Um,
Okay.
Well, um, I think having two different surcharges is really important because the economy of scale is way different if it's a deck. You want something small with
Yeah. And, and I think that's what we're trying to hit here. And again, we plan on bringing this back probably on an annual basis. I'm not saying there's gonna be huge changes, but we're gonna adjust as needed as, as things happen. Um, but we also agree that the economy of scale for a deck or a pool or something with a permit, um, as opposed to a, uh, maybe a livestock facility or a house or something built along water in, but they're gonna suck up. So there are
Yes. To follow up to sort of Jeff's question originally, this would reflect what fees are. In my own personal opinion, I think the five thousand should be a flat fee that they're assigned for probably not getting a permit. And any applicable fees on top of that should incur the additional staff time that have to address this because they're being pulled away from the duties they would be doing for all the residents anyway. This is now over and above. So I think the five thousand has to be a set fee, which is the fine than any fees, including staff legal except should be extra over and above the five thousand. I'm just glad that's clear definition on the applicable. That's what council thinks.
So you're saying according, because right now any applicable fees detachment may occur is, is a vague term. So you want to actually make it to be very specific.
Just so it's clear to understand that I, I, I personally feel that the five thousand should be the fine. And all applicable fees should include the additional time that our staff have to put towards this plus legal fees, plus any additional costs. I think that the five thousand shouldn't cover our staff time because that's not what the staff are hired for, is to address that specific matter. It's to deal with the everyday ongoing. And those that are not getting permits is not an everyday ongoing. When they get their permit and our staff then have to go out and do their inspections, that's what that fee was charged for. This is not. So that's where I'd like to see whether or not the five thousand is that additional applicable includes our staff's time.
Oh, so on. When you do that and you make it a fine, are we clearly pleading with the municipal and that kind of stuff, that we can do that and not include the time of municipal first doing that, if that makes sense?
Chair through you. The the only thing I'm going to caution here is that then just remember like there are other things that we should look at. It's people who don't get dog tags, then we have to send by law. We don't charge them the hours of bylaw because they didn't follow, um, the policy. So I, i- it's entirely up to council. It's just I feel like then we need to look at all of those areas and address them all appropriately and say, okay, so bylaw got called out to Mr. Bass, he has a dog. How many hours did that take? What's the cost? That should also be a full fee. So that's the only thing I would caution is that we, we do things all the time, um, for people where we, you know, assist in areas that take us away from our regular duties, but it's, we kind of find it's part of our regular duties in a sense. But I realize what Reeve Jennings is saying in this is that you know, if somebody didn't follow the bylaw, but we, I feel like we have a number of um, because we don't even people that don't pay taxes. We don't follow up with my hourly rate to follow up with them and to contact them to do those things. So I would just caution that we need to make sure that we
all similar. But I think just in, on the taxes, it's because we have that one point two five percent penalty ability already levied. But with reference to the dog tags and stuff, I didn't realize that. I mean, I know there's an increased fee if they don't get it by a specific date, but then there's no additional penalty being charged to them. And so we need to look at them too, because again, it, it's not a deterrent for people to not follow the laws. And that's the whole purpose of having fines set so that people do. It's the same as any other fine that you're speeding and you're getting a fine, you're getting demerit points as it goes through. So it, I think we have to look at the same thing.
I think, but you, when you're getting a fine, you're not getting the police. So, so what, what, what she's saying is we can increase the fine, which is I think the intent which is hopefully enough deterrent. Then maybe a year from now, if it's not, we can always look at it again. I think the point is to create that deterrent which isn't currently being utilized and, and really enforced. And saying, hey, we're gonna enforce it. Here, here's the, here's the fine. Let's maybe start with that. Maybe, maybe that's not, it's not. Maybe a year from now, we, we need to because it's, it's, you know, twenty, thirty, forty hours. Because we, when we send the bylaw out, even if he gives a small fine, it doesn't really cover his hours. It's a small fine. And they pay the thirty five dollar dog tag that they should have paid in the first place. So I, I understand what you're saying, but what she's saying is it's, it's a big slippery slope. How hard are we going?
Yes. We may need to look at that though, because I mean, it should be cost, it should be cost recovery. It should be costing extra.
I was gonna say, I agree with, I agree with her in what she's saying. In the same token, the five thousand dollar fine is that allow like, would you, in, in an average case, somebody doing that, would you use the whole five thousand dollars in the same time? I know it's a fine and I can see where you're coming from, but it's in some, on most cases.
Really? So we don't have a lot of these situations. Um, and that's where we're kind of at this point based off of a couple that we've had, uh, we felt with the required mileage, all those things involved with going back. Um, that it would be appropriate for a larger permitted building, uh, or structure uh, in, in that region. We, like, I, we, we also have to keep in mind that if we're gonna start charging staff time, we need to then keep very accurate records in the event that we go to court with these individuals and we're already very small and our time is already stretched pretty thin. So that would just add an additional. That's why we were just, you were going with a straight surcharge to try and cover that part. But again, if council wants that, I would just recommend that we bring back an additional report on the time and almost a policy for us for record keeping them for if we go to.
I think I'd kind of agree with the, that's your approach here. Go with it for the five thousand dollar fine and then in a year's time, we can always, it's just like, we have, if we have a fine, we got two or three cases where you put a whole bunch of tiny man's sort of stuff. It might, the base right there, we're lucky. Like I said, it's a point of the body, but it would be that extreme that comes out. Do that, we actually, how someone like do it, the, the polish the building and then the, the, that drags on. Is there like a simple way to put in something where like uh, it staff go over a certain amount of time? Because I agree with you, you're, you're doing like the taxes, the dog, all this, if that all makes sense, there's a fine for it. That's part of the staff time doing it. But usually those are a little bit, I don't know, they're quick and quicker, but they could be quicker than, than something that could be pretty drawn. I mean, you, you get, you get to hit somebody with the five thousand dollar fine and they, they pay the fine to do the thing and, and it takes five hours of your time and, and, and we're over and done with and it's fine. And, and the next one come in and they could take you know, with lawyer, with the legal stuff, it could take sixty hours of all our staff time. So is there like a like a magic cutoff number we could put in there? Or can we just say, because we don't have a lot of them, we'll just, when it comes up, we'll just deal with it then?
Chair through you. Now, so you got the importance of looking at this on a regular basis because they change. I can tell you right now that if, if we were to take an average of time spent, um, on building issues that we have and an average of time spent dealing with bylaw issues, like individual bylaw issues, I've spent substantially more time on individual bylaw issues that we don't charge back to people than what I have on buildings. That's my only, um, comment there. But again, if we look at this on a regular basis, then we'll have more of an average wh- what it really entails. Wh- what it really entails.
Yeah, so when I look at this, because we're just stepping into this now. I would think that us remaining clean where this is the fine and it's punitive. This is applicable fees and it could be log, demo, whatever the lawyer fees, all that kind of stuff, start there. And then, yeah, a year from now or when we cover off, we do that. If all of a sudden we have eighteen of these, if people are saying, oh, five, it's a profit, it's four million dollar building, no big deal. Then we have to revisit what are punitive actions. That's how I would look at this. I would be concerned. And again, when you have a broad net. All of a sudden, we pick up the dog fees, stuff like that, and then is it more bother for you? To go down that route? So it does become kind of. So that's sort of what I look, because I have trouble with that until you use the dog. That might get over us for the staff. And you do have very small staff, so I would want all their time sucked up in that, but. I just think that if we're gonna start something, let's start at one spot and then build on it from there, if that makes sense, the other contractors.
So I agree with Trevor, because I'm looking at, and I'm just throwing a number out. It's basically if you break it down to hours and a hundred dollars an hour, it's fifty hours. Then that would be stopped. But the way I'm reading it, any applicable fees, if there's lawyers, if there's demolition, which would not be done by us, it would be done by someone that's being built to that. So we have basically, again, I'm just going with the number, hundred dollars an hour, we have fifty hours of our staff time, it could be just two, and then. If it if it does need the demo and everything else, we mean, somebody else is gonna do it, it's a bill, it it's just getting tacked onto it. So we can at least make sure that the taxpayer, the ratepayers are all covered. That there is. Disadvantage, disservice to breaking the law. And and I think that's at least for the time being, I think it's the right way without creating more paperwork, more. Loss for the staff. Without them having to have a bookkeeper to bookkeep hours for everything from bylaws to.
I just wanted to maybe state the obvious word once again, that I think our committee of justice meeting from beforehand showed us how staff. That's they're trying to make things work the best and what's the easiest thing for people to do. And if we have to keep reaching out, because there's always is that old school thinking of. Uh, you know, it's not on television, you do it. It's clear that we're working, we're trying to make it work for people. So once again, it's like, it's it's just a, you know, you gotta keep getting that. People say, don't you come in and talk to staff because they're gonna work, where they're working to, we're gonna make it work. And it's actually making you have less headaches in the future. So I think that's uh that is the work, the way our staff are doing it as well, so.
Because we do have to make sure that we're representing all the residents. So, you know, to make sure that whatever's maybe being built that shouldn't. That the people that are around it are still being protected, because that's the whole thing. That's why we've got to make sure that everybody is is on board. Go out for a year and.
That's in discussion next year.
Okay, so move by councillor Bass, second by councillor Crabtree, that council approved the drop by law for building permit fees presented this day. All in favor? Move by councillor Crabtree and second by councillor Johnson, that council approved the minutes. He has a whole meeting of May twenty first, twenty four, and approve the recommendations contained within. All in favor? Move by deputy Reeve Carroll and second by councillor Bass, that council approved the minutes of American Elijah Board Meeting of April twenty third, twenty twenty four. Information, all in favor? Carrie. Move by councillor Bass, second by councillor Crabtree, oh, sorry, no petitions, now we'll move to bylaws. Move by councillor Bass, second by councillor Crabtree, that bylaw four zero seven three dash twenty twenty four. Being a bylaw to establish a new bylaw respecting building permit and inspections. That's construction, demolition, and change of use permits. They ran a first, second, and third time and passed sign and sealed this fourth day of June twenty twenty four. All in favor? That's Carrie. Move by councillor Crabtree and second by councillor Johnson, that bylaw four zero seven four twenty twenty four. Being a bylaw to establish a parkland dedication policy for the township of Montague. They ran a first, second, and third time and passed sign and sealed this fourth day of June twenty twenty four. All in favor? Move by councillor Johnson and second by deputy Reeve Carroll, that bylaw four zero seven five twenty twenty four, being a bylaw to appoint an alternate inspector. We ran a first, second, and third time and passed sign and seal this fourth day of June twenty twenty four. All in favor? Carrie. Thank you, George. Move by deputy Reeve Carroll and second by councillor Bass, that four zero seven six twenty twenty four, being a bylaw to authorize the execution. Of the agreement between the council of the township of Montague and the township of Montague Fire Fighters Association. For the ownership and insurance of the antique fire front. They ran a first, second, and third time and passed sign and seal this fourth day of June twenty twenty four. All in favor? That's Carrie. No motion, notice of motion. Correspondents, item, we have O P P request letter to Montague Council for in-kind usage of all.
Yes, so the O P P have put in a request for our council to waive the fee um for them to use Rosedale Hall um. For the detachment commander and operations manager's meeting in East Region.
Okay, it doesn't look very kind enough to say no.
Even though, you know, it'll say the obvious, Rosa Hall doesn't really, you know, make money unless there's a company in there that's struggling. You, you know, obviously, what is it now? Is it, or eleven percent of our budget goes towards O P P?
Yeah, so we're just over five hundred thousand dollars a year, go with the O P P. Um the O P P Association. Also rents our hall and they pay the rental fee, so um I, yeah, I'm not sure the detachment commanders are paying for it to waive.
And then the rental fee is how much?
It was for four hours. So we normally give them, being an O P P and being like a community group. Community groups, we give it to them as a resident rate, so it'd be a hundred dollars.
We 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 are offering a pension rate to the O P P, to like, I mean, everyone that obviously worked with our with our partners, the O P P, I think, but also in the same token, it's it's uh. I mean, we're not a charity um and and there's costs that we associate because that will be associated to that as well for us. Um with beneath these two as well, I believe. So I I mean, I mean, I I wanna work with our partners, the O P P, but in the same token, like. We are. We are not a business that is giving a donation. This is something that that actually costs our ratepayers, our ratepayers, which is my my opinion, but.
I was just gonna say that we asked if Mighty Trucks, if I'm not mistaken, and they didn't wanna do it. Not sure what fee was, at least I believe they didn't wanna do it for anything.
I think they didn't show up.
No, but I mean, for this year.
The chair through you. So um for the machines, they advise that if availability was available, they would potentially come. But for us to guarantee them to be there, we would need to pay on duty fees, um which would be substantial, so we said no.
So. We will offer. I'm I'm sorry, turn for top. If they don't want to, they can pay the fee.
So so through you, Chair, because my recommendation for this one um at this point is to uh allow it. This time, um obviously, they are community partners. We do wanna work with them. It is great to have the presence and that number of them in our area. Um but I think moving forward that it should be more of an equal collaboration back and forth.
Yeah.
And I and I agree. I think it's nice to say like, you know, we will waive it. It's also good to have, like you say, police presence. There are people like, we we wanna see police presence there. Around that area for just for community safety. Um and also that we that we were offering the uh the rate that was for for the residents to, so we we obviously wanna work in the most possible way. I agree with that. We, I think that would be the right. The right to which do as well, yeah.
Okay. So move by councillor Bass, second by councillor Crabtree, that council approved the request from the O P P for the in-kind rental. Of Rosedale Hall for the East Region Detachment Commander and Operations Manager Training Session on June eighteenth, twenty twenty four. For all in favor? Those opposed?
Hmm.
Okay, that's Carrie. Oh, that's okay.
I I find it very insulting that they would say that if they don't have the availability, they're gonna charge. I'm sorry, that's, it's a low, my question, in my opinion.
And our next one is the Lanark County Letter to Minnesota for Improvement and Change.
So this came to us, um they have a deadline now to August um as of today. So basically, the county is seeking a member from each of our municipalities for inclusion, diversity, equity, and access working group. Um it can be a member of council and or a member of the public. So as. What we do with most county uh fees, we come to council first, see if there's interest in council. Um if not, we'll post to the public. But if it's similar to some of our others, we've had no application. Um so my recommendation would be for council to, even if you're interested in posting it up to the public, then we have that up other council.
Another discussion?
See it order the public, because it'd be nice to see someone from a local that, yeah, so it's basically something that's 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 new, dividing you to as well, maybe more, you remind you. Uh you know, but it's sometimes that perspective, it's not that, but you only care about, but the perspective of, the perspective of sort of. Welcome inside of things, I'll start to say that, yeah, but I'm.
So we can post it?
I can get back first.
Okay.
All right.
The move by councillor Crabtree and second by councillor Johnson, the council point treper Johnson is alternate to the Lanark County Inclusion Diversity Equity and Access. Idea Working Group and that council directs them, posts to the public. All in favor? Carrie. And we'll move on to the information item A that was brought forward.
I just like bringing forward, if the president wants something brought to our council, uh it's interesting to address it, uh when it is brought forward, um. I mean, it's obviously a, my comment would be, I think it's a little premature, uh so it was just basically a delegation to council, something something that's even, they can step forward, but we'll. If anybody wants to make comments on it, but I just wanna like, I just like maybe acknowledge another.
And then number C, our community media release?
I see this is already, I'm sorry, I see this is already posted uh on our media, social media and everything else, at least at the game or maybe Grace too. Uh great song, but it hits by the way. Uh but but it's it's great. I mean, I think Renford won this one last year, so I think there's a push against that, you know, for us to. In Lanark too, so like, I know I know we have lots of cycles set there, so it's making sure that they're aware of it and they're kind of posting that kind of stuff, so. It's kind of a cool challenge. I'm not a big cyclist, but it's it's a cool challenge.
Okay, and the media release?
There's a lot there. Uh everybody can read through it. I know on the first one, the housing program funding allocation, uh there has an update from that, the federal government has some new agreements with the on, with the upper government. So there is funding that is kind of flowing again, to make sure that we have that funding. Everything else, everything, everybody can sort of reasonably, so.
This final, open up any questions from our. Thank you. I have a question about probably protocol, I guess. If Gerald makes the motion, can he actually vote against it?
Yep. All right.
Chair through you. So whenever it's moved in second, it's just to get it on the table really for discretion, so anybody can move in and second it and still vote against it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Tom?
Uh what are you talking about? The permits for building permits and whatnot. Like, right now, and you're gonna put a fine in for it if you don't get the permit. But it doesn't really explain when you need a permit, like example. If I have to replace two shingles on our roof, I presume I don't need a permit. If I have to replace all the shingles in my roof, do I need a permit? That's not listed anywhere I can find on the township website. Other people, other townships list, if you're just doing a few shingles, you don't need a permit. If you're replacing the whole roof, you need a permit. If you're putting the skylight in, you need a permit. What about if you're replacing a window? If if you're putting in, just taking out one window and putting in the same size. What about if you're putting in a bigger window, putting in a new window where there was no window? When do you need permits?
Chair through you. So we always recommend everybody call the C B O. The reason why we don't have it listed um is because if anything's missed. And it should be on that list, we're gonna go to court and we're gonna be liable for it. So it's always up to the individual who's doing the work is to call the C B O. No matter really what you're going to do. It's just like if you dig in your yard, you have to call for location. Same type of thing. You're gonna call the office and Jim and or some of us will advise whether you need a permit. So the reason, and like I said, the reason why, it's no different. Than like listing volunteers. If you miss one thing, it could be very costly for the municipality, so that's why we just have basically residential. I'm not saying we can't have an info sheet for some of the easier ones, obviously if you're changing to um. Shingles, you don't need a permit um in that type of thing. So we can do info, but again, we're gonna list everything in the, if we miss anything. We're, we're gonna be liable.
Like, sometimes you go to re-shingle your roof and you find out, oh, I gotta put in three new four by eight sheets of plywood up there because it's rotten. Now, does that need a permit?
So again, call.
You're halfway, you're halfway through the job. You didn't know you needed it when you started.
Right, but it's not structural, so I think that it it all depends. And I mean, I think that if you call the C B O. He's going to be able to advise you on that. I think one of your um questions or comments was about the uh solar panels. Absolutely, you have to get a permit in the sense that we have to make sure that that the trusses can hold the weight of the solar panels. So we're gonna need either, especially if your house is older, we're gonna need engineer stamp on those trusses to state that they're gonna hold that weight. So again, no matter, because everybody's situation's different and everything is always all the C B O. Just check with the C B O if you're gonna build.
Yeah, but it just, it seems like a, it could be a an awful lot of calls to the office, wasting a lot of time of staff time. If, if you could just read the general list anyway, you know.
I I think uh a suggestion of an information to give some examples, but it would clearly note, these are only a few examples. Please contact the office to speak to the C B O for for further, because that's it. We can give some examples, but as Alex says, if something's missed, it can be held against us because we didn't specify.
And chair through you. I think an info sheet is really good. I just don't wanna tie it into the actual. By law, um but I think an info sheet, Tom, would help a lot of people in those. It's no different than billing events. We get a lot of calls from people saying, do you need a permit? No, you don't. But we do have a bylaw on what kind of fence you can have and all type of things. So that's why we like them calling us, because you may not need a permit. But we do have a fence by law that prohibits certain things. So um it's good to call no matter what, but we absolutely could do like an info sheet on some of those easy things.
Okay.
Like some of the things you mentioned, like you're replacing window for window, right? Not changing size, just taking it out. So all those things, we can absolutely do an info sheet. I think it's no different than our pamphlet for planning. It'd be very beneficial for us.
So we've replaced a few of the windows in our house and put in the same size back in. Never even thought about getting first. Never even thought about calling that.
No, so we can do an info sheet if council is good with that, in the sense of the. Just for some ideas of people, but we will always recommend for people to call y'all.
Yes.
And we've been, and we've been saying, we want people, if you have a question, just call, speak to our good staff, they can help you with that, so I think that's it. And and I think if you make a big list, you put me in part of the big list, I'm just gonna pick up the phone and say something to you this. So I don't see it. I gotta be, I gotta, it's like, I, I, I'm just gonna call, so like, I think that you're gonna get the call. So I think it's a, be it.
But we're happy to do an info for some of those, some of those ones that are kind of standard, Tom.
Okay.
Any question?
I have another question. On your audit, when you're. She was listing the, some of the things you have to declare as as of where, like your buildings get older, there. You, I forget what.
Retirement obligation.
Right. Does that apply to? The portion of the airport that the township owns?
Chair through you, that's a great question, Tom. It absolutely does, but the air. Reports this on Smith Ball's books, so since Ball will be responsible for getting that done. For all of our buildings, we went ahead and got hazardous substance reports done from outside uh. Or we're coming up for council. Um so. Um, so for the airports, um, now, the buildings are owned by the municipalities that are there. So if basically Smith Falls needs to follow up with their auditors, see if they're gonna require them to get done on every building that's at the airport.
I was more thinking of the, the paved runway, if, but if all comes, comes back to the township, oh. Now you're gonna spend a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand on repaving the runways.
Oh, Chair through you, so the asset retirement obligation is strictly for, um, hazardous substances. So it wouldn't include pavement, none of the roads are included in that, it's basically asbestos and or fuel tanks and things like that. Some, if you have an arena, those types of things, it doesn't include asphalt railways, that's not what that piece of is about. So that the runway itself won't be included in that, it will be the.
A fuel tank there a few years ago on the airport.
Yeah, so Chair through you, that, that would be the whole thing, is the fuel tank would be included in that, um, as a calculation, but. Again, that's up to Smith Falls to do, because it sits on their T C As.
So I just wondered, if it has to be replaced, Monique's gonna have to pay a portion of that, should that not be included in the Monique's?
Chair through you, so that's not what the asset retirement obligation is about, the asset retirement obligation is about retiring that asset and what the cost could be to, like, the environmental impact. So, um, again, we absolutely own that fuel tank, in the future, it doesn't mean that we will, so we only account for just. Getting rid of that tank, based on the asset retirement, if the replacement is in. The asset management plan, so that's a different, totally different document, totally different, um, legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, this is an only agenda, this is enough answered, uh, June is Pride Month, have we ever done anything for Pride Month, or? Do you ever think of doing something for Pride Month? I notice a lot more people. Painting sidewalks, I don't think we've ever done anything, though.
No, it hasn't been brought forward for.
So, so Chair through you, if you'd like to send a letter requesting that at council, we can put it on the next agenda.
So you could put a flag up for one day or something, or?
You just need to bring something to council for a request, because it's not currently in our flag policy, for, for Pride Month.
You mean?
We have, we don't have, if, if council has to approve policies that would include all of those things, so you would just need to. Request and put it on the agenda, or be a delegation to council if you want to make that request, um, as long as I have it before the next meeting.
Which is?
The next meeting is the eighteenth, so I'll need it by the thirteenth of June.
Thank you.
Any personal questions?
I have no questions on yours either.
Nope.
Okay, so, moved by Councilor Johnson and second by Deputy Reed Carroll, that bylaw goes through seven, seven dash twenty twenty four. Being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of council at its regular meeting held on Tuesday, June fourth, twenty twenty four. We ran it for a second and third time and passed sign and seal this fourth day of June, twenty twenty four, all in favor? That's carried. Moved by Deputy Reed Carroll and second by Councilor Bass, the council adjourned the regular meeting June fourth, twenty twenty four. At seven fourteen P M. Until June eighteenth, twenty twenty four, at six P M, correct the following chair, all in favor? That's carried.